Ladies and gentlemen, please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Tripp.
Here.
Alderman Macaro.
Here.
Alderman Cassetti. Alderman Filippone.
Here.
Alderman Dempsey. Alderman Casilas. Alderman Yauman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Schewert.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell.
Here.
Alderman Libra. Nine present by the House.
Declare quorum. I'd like to have support consideration of previous minutes from July 9th. Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Your Majesty.
Mr. Yeaman, seconded by Mr. Schewert. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Public session, would anyone from the public wish to speak? Would anyone from the public wish to speak? Would anyone from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, seeing none? Public session is closed. Okay. Public official session, Mayor Cassetti, please.
Good evening, President Macaro, members of the Board of Alderman residents in the great city of Ansonia. First, I would like to take a moment of silence for a friend and a familiar face in Ansonia who passed away, Jim Mead, who worked as a machine operator at Public Works and was a member of Fountain Hoes Fire Company. He will be missed by many. Thank you. I guess Jeremy and Dawn are not here. Well, I guess they're not here, and I'm gonna skip over that. Unless you want me to proceed with it, just let you know. Huh? Now, let me turn your attention to another well-known Ansonia resident who has been instrumental in helping our Ansonia schoolchildren since forming their nonprofit, Orange U for Ansonia. I want to thank Dawn Ossie and Jeremy Musnicki for their efforts in helping our Ansonia children. This past weekend, I participated in their second Super Soak event, and I can tell you, it was another huge success. The event was a celebration of the one-year anniversary of Orange U for Ansonia, and approximately 140 children attended. The organization has helped organize successful events that are free to participating children from Ansonia and the Valley. We also want to thank Charter Hoes for leading out Engines 3 and 4 and providing water for the event. So, they're not here, so I have a little gift for them. So, maybe they show up later, I'll present it to them. A notice to proceed was given to our contractor, Grasso Construction, for the Prindle Avenue and Pulaski Highway project. We anticipate mobilization and a ribbon cutting sometime next week. Stay tuned for that announcement. We will also be having a ribbon cutting at the Red Wing Pond House. We want to thank Jackie Lima, Adam Schaefer, Fancy, and the parents and teachers and children of the Red Wing Pond House for helping to move this project along. The renovation project consists of additional space for children's lockers, separate entranceway, and a glassed-in porch for the students could look out at the nature center during the cold months. Congratulations to everyone. The Pond House will look beautiful for the first day of school. Another ribbon cutting to be on the lookout for after Labor Day is Burns Construction. Joe Burns and his family owned construction company relocated from Stratford to 16 Riverside Drive in Ansonia. The company is a full-service road construction and utility construction and site development. Burns brings over 275 employees to Ansonia and has relocated to the 40-acre site here in our city. At one time, they competed for jobs with my construction company, and I don't want to see them coming. Now, I'm welcoming them with open arms. What a difference a few decades make. We are very proud to have Burns Construction. We will let you know the date of the ribbon cutting. We have some exciting new ideas for several buildings in our downtown, both on Upper and Lower Main Street. We have spoken to owners in several locations who approached us with brand-new project ideas for these buildings. You may or may not hear more about the details from our Economic Development Director later on. Finally, please join me on Saturday, August 24th, at Nolan Field. Your ticket donation will go to support all the Ansonia sports programs and leagues. It is sure to be a day or night filled with fun. There will be a live performance from Draw the Line, which is a premier Aerosmith tribute band. There will be fireworks, children activities, not to mention food and beverage. Please join me for what will be an exciting event. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Any questions for the mayor from the Alderman? Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Marine, Corporation Council?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I want to report that we're still in negotiations with ARMS, EMTs, and supervisors. I'll have updates as the process continues, but for now, I want to thank our ARMS Director, Jared Hian, for, of course, participating in our many sessions and strategy meetings. And, of course, our EMTs and supervisors participating in the process. I'm, of course, happy to report that we have resolved the Red Wing Pond House agreement, and not only do we have a new term with them, but they're proceeding forward, as the mayor mentioned, with the renovations. And they've invited the Board and the residents to ribbon cutting to show them. The Board of Education, we had a wonderful meeting this morning going over workers' comp And Orange, we a little late? There's more items to discuss in the executive session, but I think I'll let the mayor segue back into his update for Orange for Ansonia.
Sure. Fashionably late?
Maybe there are issues.
I'm sure. Jeremy and Dawn, will you please come up? For yous who don't know, this is Orange for Ansonia, co-founders, Dawn Ossie and Jeremy Musnicki. I would like to present with you... I would like to present each one of yous with the key to the city. Is that yours?
Does it really open anything?
Listen, it'll open any door in City Hall. Let's take a picture. Who's got it? You got it? Mayor, one more question.
Mayor Cassetti, one more picture.
One more picture?
And, of course, we want to thank the Orange for Ansonia and Jeremy and Dawn for everything they've been doing for the community, and, of course, especially the Super Soak weekends that they've been doing, including last weekend. I think a number of our Alderman were there as well and got completely soaked. Just a tremendous asset to the community, really doing a lot. And we got a tremendous amount of kids out for that event that got to have a great Saturday because of the efforts of this organization. And, of course, again, thanks to our wonderful fire department and volunteers for making the water available.
You're also a child? Sheila O'Malley, Director of Economic Development?
Thank you, President Macaro, members of the Ansonia Board of Alderman. A couple of, you know, very promising proposals or projects in the wings. One you'll be talking about, which is Farrell Pominis, and they are actually looking at purchasing land, and they are potentially going to expand their warehousing situation, which right now, they have storage space in Waterbury and one other community, and they want a central location. So, they're trying to bring everything back to the industrial park. And the good news is, they're doing very well, but they are busting at the seams, so they're gonna be looking for more space to expand that facility, which is approximately 70,000 square feet. So, they're gonna look to, in the upcoming years, look to expand not only their employee base, but the size of their company. So, that's exciting news. You may have read about Rugpad USA. Rugpad is looking for an expansion as well, possibly another 100,000 square feet. And, of course, they're trying to purchase the two facilities that they're in right now. They have 173,000 square feet. They are looking to almost double that and double their employee base. So, we're working with them on SHW, the adjacent property, and we're working with demo contractors, trying to get pricing on that, and also working with our environmental consultants. We did get some assistance from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. They're going to be sending a team of environmental people down to do some removal action and some other remedial actions. So, the idea is to try to get that site prepped and ready for a future expansion of Rugpad USA. Greenway 3 and 4, the final design is being completed. They are looking for a go-ahead on the final design in September, could possibly see some activity before the winter and a shutdown time period. That's about it for now.
Sheila, how many employees do they have there at Rugpad?
Rugpad has 90.
And they want to go to how many?
The owner said to me that he could double and triple his employee base. They also purchased the company in Maine, and so they want to bring all of that equipment and force people to operate that equipment here in Ansonia.
Ten families have already relocated from Bridgeport and Waterbury combined to reach Ansonia.
That's great news. Thank you. Any questions for Sheila O'Malley? Mr. Schewert?
Yes.
Where does the 3 and 4 Greenway, or is that called?
That's along the Target, along Target, the wall, right? And it's gonna try, we're trying to bring people down into the downtown area. So, you're gonna get one continuous loop. Don't make me bring the chart out with the segments and all of that, but, yeah. You're trying to close the loop so there's one continuous route.
It won't continue going where it might, it's gonna go in the other direction?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Sheila. Director of Constituent Services, Greg Martin, please.
Thank you, President Macaro, greetings, members of the Board. Just wanted to recap, on July 27th, we had the grand reopening of Apestone Park. It went over very well. It was very well-attended until a rogue thunderstorm itself, parked itself, rode over Ansonia for about an hour, put a damper on things till about 3 o'clock. But some crowd did filter back, but I would like to report that since the pickles have been in and the grilling stations, I've witnessed several families and little parties taking place on Saturdays and Sundays down there, enjoying the pond. And I've also witnessed some boating going on in the pond as well, so we think it's off to a good start. Hopefully, we have a really nice future going with town, we can bring back families and crowds to use the facilities there. This past week, we did a small graffiti cleanup. We removed about 20, probably recent markings throughout the city that I've identified, and pleased to report that now, as of today, we're probably our third straight year of being graffiti-free, which not a lot of communities can say, you know, speak about. As the mayor referenced, 24th of August, we have Rock the Valley at Nolan Field. We put a new twist on it this year, trying to generate some revenues with gate receipts that will be distributed among five youth sports programs, pop winners, soccer, softball, slash Little League, and cheerleading. And there'll also be some revenue sharing from the concession stand for net profits that are generated, that will also be operated by Ansonia High School and the football team as well. So, those are my updates. Any questions?
Thanks, Greg. Controller Kim DiStefano. Good evening, Kim.
Good evening. Been very busy in finance, as always. We got all of our budget books bound and pented out to everyone, so everybody should have their own copy now. Majority of all of our year-end entries are pretty much done. There's a few remaining. A lot of analysis still left to be done for the upcoming audit. We're hoping to get the auditor out soon, and we've started sampling in the tax office, the accessories office, and things right through to the payments, et cetera. The new year, 1920 fiscal year, general ledger is up and running. We've been issuing check runs, POs have been pulled, so everything's pretty much back to normal after the shutdown there, as we're closing one year and getting into the new year. We've also, next week, going to have a software presentation over at the Board of Ed with some new Tyler software that we'd like to take a look at. We need to go on the same platform, so they're gonna come out and give us a three-hour demonstration in depth and see whether this is exactly what we need or need for the Board of Ed side and the City side. So, everything is going well. Any questions?
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Chief Cota, good evening, how are you?
Good evening, how are you? Be quick this evening, our two officers that were recently approved started the academy last Thursday. They're up in Waterbury, which is the department, so they've been training there. Everything's going well so far. We recently made an arrest in the North Lane Street crash that was back in, I think, early May, if I recall correctly. We did make the one arrest Saturday evening or Sunday evening. We called the person and turned themselves in speed and out all of the factors in that crash, so we made that arrest. You'll see tonight, I believe, in front of you is the ordinance that we've spoken about for the parking on the west side in the area of Griffin Hospital. And then, we're still continuing to work on the shootings that occurred, the one in Lester and Main Street, the combination there, and then Howard Avenue. The Howard Avenue one, Howard and Third Street. We're confident that we should be making some future arrests. We've got some lab work and other things that need to be completed to get the case where it needs to be for court, but we're confident in that case. And the other one is moving, but just not quite spread yet. We continue to work on those, and we ask anybody if they do have information or think they do, to always call us, and then we'll take any information.
Thanks, Sheila. Any questions for Chief Cota? Thanks, Chief. Mr. DeLassio, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, everyone. Public Works has been busy, as always. They're out greasing the flood control. We have a inspection from the Army Corps of Engineers this coming month, so we're out greasing and taking care of the pumps at the flood control gates. Guys are out painting crosswalks, patching holes, repairing street signs, start all the new boardwalks, the volleyball court, the picnic tables, everything up at Apestone Park. New Riverwalk sign was installed, roadside's out cut and brushed every day. We got this new company coming and taking our mattresses from Public Works. It's a state-funded project that, I guess, when you buy a mattress nowadays, you can pay $9 to buy the mattress, and the state takes the mattresses away. So, they're installing a dumpster down our place. So, all the mattresses that we get down there, probably close to 100 a month, they'll save us on tonnage. They're gonna take the mattresses and recycle them to a recycling center, so that's gonna save us a little bit of money on our disposal cost. And the people can bring them in free of charge. It's gonna help the city a lot, probably seven, eight loads per month, which comes out to a couple thousand dollars a month of savings. And other than that, we're just out there every day, just trying to keep up with the grass cut and the road sides, and that's about it. Any questions? I know the street signs, we're getting there. I have a bunch just for the chief to take care of this month also, and it's, we're getting to it. Every day's a challenge. You go to work in the morning, things change every day, so...
Okay, that, the two signs that I asked you about, and where are you with the fee scale on tires and refrigerators?
We can't really enact that until we get our debit machine down there. What's happening now, people come in with bulk. A lot of them don't have a check on them. They go back after their check, or go get a cashier's check from the bank or a money order. Tires, right now, we need to charge for tires. Refrigerators and all, we're getting rid of them finally for free.
Okay.
I got a person that's taking them now, so we're not paying for refrigerations no more. Air conditioners, they're taking that. Our other metals, we're getting paid for. We'll be getting checks for like 5,000 per month just for scrap metals. We're doing good with that also. What does cost us money right now is tires.
So, why can't we just charge the tires?
Like I said, we need a debit machine. That was, finance been working on it. It's gonna take us some time, but once we get the debit machine, they can come in to people, swipe their card. A lot of them drop their stuff off, they don't come back. They try to keep their license, but there's always an argument. I think it'd be a lot easier, once we have that debit machine, they won't argue with you, they can swipe their card, they know they have to pay for it. I mean, if fees are put together, they're all ready to go, we just need that debit card.
So, um...
And we're gonna increase our tonnage also.
Last time we talked about it, I think you were talking with...
It was Richie.
Richie about it, or you?
Yeah, we've got Webster Bank working with us.
Yeah.
They're doing some updates on their end with the updates, they were helping us out until we were waiting for probably that in September, they should have all their new updates in place with the emergency handles. But they've got a third, that they're using for the line and credit card purchases, so they were doing updates, which should make it easier on our side, which is part of what the problem is, but maybe it'll work for the city.
The fees, can't charge the fees to the residents, there's a fee towards the use of that.
Right.
So, maybe we could work it in, work it into the tire exchange.
The tire fee itself.
And also the tonnage, the increase of tonnage disposal costs. It's costing us a little bit of money right now. If we increase that, which we already, you guys already approved, that'll be a break-even anyway, so we're doing better. No more charge for mattresses, no more charge for refrigerators. We're doing okay with the transfer station now. We get the little increase, we'll be in pretty good shape.
All right, you just gotta get that one sign.
Got one sign. All right, you got it.
Thanks a lot, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Committee reports. Finance Committee, Mr. Stone, you moved to pay all bills, it's bound to be accurate and correct?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Public Works Committee, we already heard from Mr. DeLassio. ARMS Committee, Mr. Blackwell.
Sir, I'm just gonna, I'll take care of this, I'll have my assistant read that, please.
What?
That's what they pay you big money for, Karen. Report from July for ARMS, responded to 268 calls, 113 of which were treated and transported. Mutually aid from Derby, 30 calls. The biggest receiving hospital was Griffin, 152 of those calls. There were a lot of, the chief can speak to this here, but there's a lot of diversion. And the most important thing, the total billing revenue for the month was $64,164.14. I'll give you this report.
Sure, give it.
That's it.
Okay, WPCA, Mr. Stone, anything to report?
I would just, I know it may have been mentioned, because I wasn't here last month, but the WPCA kept a zero budget, and I would like to thank the ordinance committee for changing the way that that board works, because if the ordinance committee didn't do that, we would've never passed that budget without the taxpayers getting an increase, which was totally wrong and inappropriate. It was political. And I just want to thank the ordinance committee for all the work they did to enable us to be able to really go through that budget and end up finding out that we didn't have to base it. That's all I got to say about this.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Mr. Schewert, Fire Committee, do you have any, is your assistant gonna handle that tonight?
I'm gonna have my assistant read that. Fire Department responded to 60 calls during the month, highlighted by 18 motor vehicle assists, four CO investigations, and three structured cooking fires, for a total of 60 calls. Additionally, the Fire Marshal conducted two investigations, both of which were deemed accidental. And this month was the retirement for Chief Adamowski and several of the people here attended that as well. It was very nice. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Yeaman, the Ordinance Committee?
We have two ordinance on the agenda tonight, as the chief alluded to. A lot of hard work has gone into the parking ordinance there in the fourth ward around Griffin Hospital, so I'm hoping for the Board's consideration of that tonight. The second ordinance, the park and recreation, where I'm gonna be asking the Board to table that, as we've, I would like to schedule a ordinance meeting for next week, August 22nd, 7:00 PM. The members can make it. We have a little discussion. We've gotten a little bit more input from the current Recreation Committee. I think it's worth more conversation for the Voice Initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Yeaman. Housing, Mr. Cassetti is not here tonight, I'm the Housing Authority, so any other committees to report around tonight, gentlemen? Okay, thank you. Municipal reports, we have vote recommendations, there are no motions, we have the controller approvals, we'll make note of them in the notes, and the Lanius Department report. Move on to the tax collector report, request for refunds. Anyone make a motion to Mr. Rivers?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Blackwell, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Accidents and claims, claim is number one. Is there a motion to refer, Mr. Yeaman?
Motion to refer to Court Counsel. Say it.
Mr. Rivers, seconded, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are no communications tonight. Resolutions, first resolution is the agreement of sale of 165 Main Street. We're gonna take that under new business, since it's already on the agenda. Number two, the Farrell Pominis Corporation Development. Sheila, you wanna speak on that, or?
Sure.
So, working with economic development of this, we have a great opportunity for some additional investment above Fountain Lake. Farrell Pominis Corporation, as we know, has the state of the art headquarters of the Fountain Lake. They're looking at a segment of the property, undeveloped portion of the property, adjacent to their current facility.
Yeah, it's actually 30 acres, but 20, only 20 are developable, so 10 acres of that is open space.
They have some future plans, specifically a warehouse to store some of their product and also to sort of use as a base to increase their operations.
They're trying to consolidate everything in Ansonia. They're out, they have a lot of warehouse space in Waterbury, they want to shift everything over to Ansonia.
And the employment impact, will be...
Yeah, they're looking to add employees. They actually have an agreement with the state that where they have committed to adding additional employees. They've added five since they've been here, and they're gonna add another 10, looking to add another 10. And then, you know, they probably don't want to, it's a little premature to talk about the expansion on their... expansion on their, at their facility, but they, but they have been talking to us about that, about possible expansion, bumping out that section.
The one issue is they have a difficulty getting approval from the corporate to go ahead with the purchase, given the current assessment. So they're seeking, under the City and Town Development Act, for an incentive to purchase the property. So we've essentially put together what would be a tax abatement for them, on the condition that they proceed with the development within five years.
Mr. Stone?
Now, they got a tax abatement on the property area now, right?
From the state.
Not from us?
No.
Okay. How long is left on that one?
That was the manufacturer's.
I think, I think Paul, Paul Zep had mentioned that that was coming to an end within a year.
Well, it's hard to believe, but I bet it's been, what, four years since they've opened over there, right? Hard to believe. Thank you.
I mean, this is what this incentive program is designed for, to encourage a future expansion.
Mr. Trent? Just if I remember correctly, the corporation council can remind me, there was a new road placed directly up to the top of that hill. Who paid for that road?
That's the road that the city of Ansonia was able to secure, $2 million, split, one million from the state, one million from Connecticut.
Nope, it was USDA.
Right.
And state of Connecticut.
Right, so federal and state money paved, paved that road to go straight up to the front door of stuff, right? Who owns the land that they intend to expand upon?
Cinto, R.B. Cinto.
I sat in this chamber when both corporation council and economic department told me that, we, what is the agreement that we have for Cinto? Because Cinto's not paying taxes on those pads, because it's under a city-Cinto agreement?
Yeah, they actually are paying taxes on those, on that land, on the thirty acres. They paid $54,000 on the property.
However, I distinctly remember corporation council telling me that those pads were under the auspices or the city of Ansonia had some legal, I could look this up in a minute, had some kind of legal control over those pads?
We were, we had an agreement where if we found another investor to come in.
Right.
That there would be a way to share in the purchase price.
Right.
But in this situation, rather than finding an outside investor, it turned out Farrell itself was interested. And so, Cinto has worked to negotiate a low value, but that's not Farrell's concern. Farrell's concern is about the property assessment it would have to pay taxes on going forward into the future. So the issue here isn't the sale of the property, the issue is the taxes that Farrell was concerned about paying prior to them doing the development work. The good thing for us is, when they do the development work, the assessment will increase and the taxes they pay to the city of Ansonia will increase. The issue that this resolution is trying to address is to bridge the gap, to allow Farrell to pay a lower assessment until it puts the extra money into the property, gets that warehouse, and gets those additional employees.
However, to my point, in your own words, you said that the city would share in the purchase price.
If there was an outside developer brought in to purchase the pads. We envision perhaps additional, additional companies locating up there, when in this situation, we have Farrell itself wanting to.
So who is developing this warehouse from Farrell?
That may be Cinto.
What happens if it's an outside company?
Well, it's an outside company purchasing is what I meant, and it's not, it's Farrell itself.
So Farrell owns the pads, Farrell owns all the pads?
Cinto, no, Cinto owns the pads right now.
Okay.
Farrell would be purchasing it from Cinto.
Not all the pads.
No, just thirty acres.
It's two, isn't it?
Yeah.
So as long as Cinto maintains control of the pads, he doesn't have to relinquish 50% of the purchase price?
He could sell the property for whatever he can get.
Right, but as long as he maintains control of the pads and develops for Farrell Corporation, he does not have to relinquish 50% of the purchase price.
They just don't want, they don't want Cinto to continue to own it, they want to own it themselves, they want it to be Farrell property. And so the question for them is, when they acquire it, they're concerned about the level of the set staff. They're concerned about paying the $50,000 per year. They would like a discount on that, that's what they're asking for, until they make their investment.
So from what you're saying, is Farrell an outside entity, or are they already ramped all in because they're on top of that hilltop?
Exactly, not in the terms of our agreement. Our agreement was if we went outside, brought someone in that wasn't Farrell, to be out there, that Cinto would agree to share in the proceeds.
So Farrell basically has an exclusivity clause?
In a way, they weren't factored in this party right there.
You, I think you, I don't know if you misspoke, but you had said three years from the date of closing, they had to approve it. The agreement that we have reads three?
They, the agreement does say three, they're requesting five. So it was written up as three, but they're requesting five.
Okay, and the exemption would exist for how many years?
Ten. Deducted, not an exemption.
Well, right, but it's the property.
It's exempt up to $24,000.
Right.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve it as I, I'll second it.
Discussion?
How about we approve it pending the changes?
Subject to the change.
You can vote on the change now, they could vote.
So amend the.
May be a two.
This doesn't have what was specified.
Yeah.
So what are we amending? You could vote to amend the three to five, or any other portion of the document.
So how many are you amending?
They're looking, the specific portion they're looking, that they're asking you to do, is to do development within five years. The agreement, as I originally drafted, drafted it was a development within three years.
Seems strange that the company's person, it seems it's gonna take five years to be doing something.
It's simply the request.
They are, they are very conservative and they take their time and their parent company has to, has to agree. And so they're requesting a little extra time, although they think they can do it in less time.
Casey, is it amended to five years, Joe?
I'd like to keep it at three, if they want more time, they can come back and ask.
Tell them four, split the difference and see what they say. Boy.
I like the idea.
I'd like to keep their foot, I'd like to keep the foot on the gas and give them three, if they want four, they can come back and ask.
I like the keeping it like it was.
Mr. Stone, what was that?
Three years?
I agree with, look, these people have invested in Ansonia already and they're gonna invest more and we're gonna nickel and dime, kinda, it's ridiculous. I think we need to forward it like it is, like it is passive, like it is, and like Joe said, it can be amended to three years.
Well, they're asking for five years.
Right, my point is that they're given three years to develop, if they can't do that, they're going to ask for a year or two. They haven't done, done from doing that, they're gonna just able to forward sooner rather than later.
So that's your motion, was it second? Mr. Rivers, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Resignation, I have a letter here from John Izzo, it's brief, so I'll read it. Dear Mr. Nimmens, I have enjoyed my time on the Board of Education and have always acted in the best interest of our students, staff, and taxpayers. For, since I am not running for another term and to avoid a distraction from the important work of the board, I must resign from my position at this time. I have fully enjoyed my service to the district and will always cherish the great strides we have made to provide better outcomes for our students. Respectfully submitted, John Izzo. Most to accept a resignation, Mr. Rivers? Second, Mr. Philip Hall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Regarding the school building commission appointments, I'm gonna skip over that under the charter, the mayor has the exclusive authority to make those appointments, does not need automatic approval. I will segue to the school regionalization committee. Mayor is nominating Christopher Phillips, Democrat, 60 Rockwood Avenue of Ansonia, to replace John Izzo on the school regionalization committee. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Mr. Yaman and Mr. Schewer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The ordinances, they have ordinance number one, parking ordinance regarding the vicinity of Griffin Hospital, Mr. Yaman?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I indicated earlier, this is an ordinance that has been talked about for, well, many years actually, has been worked on by the chief, as well as the police commission, getting the language together, there's been a ton of input from Griffin Hospital. In fact, at our last ordinance meeting, Pat Shemel was there, as well as the members of Griffin Hospital staff, giving input. Their one request, and it's also, I understand, the request of the police commission, police department, implementation can't be done immediately. So we're looking at a, I'm asking that this board tonight pass this ordinance with the enactment date December 1st, 2019, to give us time to not only get the signs, there's signs that have to be put in place, and an application process and stickers that need to be ordered for the residents in the area and stuff like that, so. But I'd like to thank everybody for their hard work on this, it's been a discussion. I know Alderman Castellitis has worked on this very hard, I've heard from my constituency, Alderman Dixie, Alderman Rivers, all on the west side, we've heard a lot about this, and how it gets crazy for many, you know, for many, many years, we've heard about this, so.
That's right.
I'd like to ask the board to pass this time.
So that's a motion, is there a second? Mr. Rivers? Discussion, gentlemen? Mr. Blackwell?
Has anybody given any thoughts putting up a parking garage there?
There's been, there's been a lot of discussion, there's limited space over there, so they've been working out a bunch of different alternatives for their parking over there. They've indicated to us that they're looking to purchase additional property for parking and stuff like that. I know the city's been as accommodating as we can, offering parking during the day down in Owen Field, they provide bussing and stuff like that, but it just gets really crazy, particularly during the winter months when winter rules go into effect. It really creates a problem, public works has issues getting through there with the trucks and clearing snow, so.
But that's a good question, Dave, because we've been talking to Pat Shemel and other hospital people about a parking garage, and for various reasons, there's some hesitancy, but as of late, we suggested that there may be a way to secure some funding for a parking garage. So, and Pat's listening, so maybe we'll continue those discussions on.
And, Mr. President, one other thing I'll add about this, is that this is very comparable to the ordinance that's already on the books in Derby. We tried to be as reasonable as possible to make it pretty much even across the board and not punitive in any way, so.
Any further discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Number two, park and recreation regarding the creation of a new board, I ask that we table that for this evening?
I'll make that motion.
Who's seconded?
Mr. Blackwell.
All in favor, say aye. Motion table, carry.
And again, the meeting, the next ordinance meeting will be August 22nd, 7 o'clock. I'll secure a room here in City Hall and all the recreation board members are invited to get there at 22:00. 22:00, we're, just next Thursday.
Okay, under new business, number one, approval of a bid award to Banton Construction for the renovation of 65 Main Street. Do you want to be heard on that, Sheila?
Yes, sure. So, with your approval, we'd like to acquire the property at 165 Main, which is the former Wells.
This is 65 Main.
165.
No, it says number one.
We're talking about number one, 65 Main, the award to Banton Construction for the renovation of 65.
Apology, jumping ahead, excuse me. Yeah, we'd like, we'd like to come back to this board, we're still working with the engineer and the construction company, and we're working on some, some pricing.
Okay, they asked for a motion to table. Mr. Yaman, Mr. Blackwell, second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, now the Wells Fargo purchase at 165 Main Street.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Sheila.
Sorry about that, guys. Yeah, we're seeking to, with this board's approval, to acquire 165 Main Street, which is the parcel right near the ATP building, adjacent to our properties. It was a drive-through teller.
Yep.
Location. We see that as a key component to our ATP Palmer project. Want to prevent any, any, any developer coming in and maybe doing something that might interfere with the project going forward. And we think it's a good acquisition for the city at this point, and may factor into the overall project in terms of parking, et cetera. Hoping to get your approval, that's, we're using, we are using grant funds for the purchase of that property. It was originally on the market for $400,000 plus, I believe, and then went down to $250, was at $100, and we got an appraisal, and the appraisal came out to be $51,000, that's what we said we would offer, and we did, and they accepted it. Yes.
Mr. Trent?
So, you're saying that the $51,000 is gonna be covered by grant funds?
Correct.
No expense in Ansonia taxpayer?
Correct.
Mr. Kim?
I said one question, I know the property you're talking about, and that was always my concern, is that whole property could go great for development of the other buildings as far as parking. How much of that lot with the parking, or was it just the driveway section going back to the lot behind?
It's the whole, it's that whole lot, but it's not Secums, is that what you're saying?
Okay, so Secums.
It's not that building.
Property is not attached to the lot, this property is.
That's right, it's separate.
Actually, it looks like the two structures are attached.
Right.
The drive-through structure and Secums, but actually, there is a slight space between them. It's more, it's strategically advantageous because of the parking, more than the small structure that, that is a drive-through.
The parcel also.
Covers the parking.
Has parking above.
These mains for two, right?
Yes.
That's excellent, because that's always one of the things that would be key, that more needs to create more parking for any apartments and businesses there.
So it's the parcel down below.
Basically, what we're buying is increased parking ability for development.
Pretty much.
We were able to not only lock in a good number, well, people gave that number down over time.
With the development of this, the other fear, I even had thought of that when I saw it for sale, finally, somebody put a deposit down or bought up one property, they could become a thorn in the side of the, of the project.
Correct.
Let's not tell them, and let's get it as fast as, motion, please?
Can a motion to approve the agreement?
I'll cut myself off.
Mr. Philip Hall, motion to approve. Second, Mr. Yaman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Don. Motion carried. Okay, old business. Mr. Philip Hall?
Yes, as Mr. Stone mentioned before, WPCA rates did not increase, that's thanks due to the support of the city allocating funds to WPCA, so I'm making a motion to allocate $235,000 to, yeah, $235,000 from the citywide building upgrades fund.
Did you get the amount?
$235,000?
Yes.
Allocate?
To the WPCA.
Mr. Yaman, second.
Discussion?
Yes, discussion?
What were those city upgrade funds originally designated for?
They were referendum money?
Citywide building upgrades.
So, can that money, that was voted on a referendum for citywide upgrades, be used to financially stabilize the WPCA?
It's being used to purchase pumps and other improvements for the, for the station over there.
I will say that we did, you know, we fought on face value. I will say that we did, you know, we fought on face value, it does appear to be a citywide improvement. However, to get more certainty about that, we reached out to Bond Counsel, Joseph Fazi, and he did confirm that it was legitimate use of the funds, and that it did make sense, and wasn't the spirit of the referendum. Shu, you've spoken as well?
Yes, I have, and I also have.
And he hasn't... I believe we also asked him to put them to writing.
Well, wasn't money capital improvement money that was never spent for WPCA? Wasn't something there an amount of money that was...
Pump stations?
Capital... no, it was just under capital improvement, and it was never designated, but it was put in place for the WPCA.
Well, the line item that you're talking about is citywide building improvements, and as John said, the Bond Counsel advised us that that would be an appropriate reallocation, or not reallocation, appropriate use of funds.
I'm just... I'm sick of this being made into a political horse here. This is not a political horse. This is about trying... we take the rainy day fund, which we had in place for the emergencies on Pershing Drive, and we used it, and we also knew by our Bond Counsel and by the Mr. Fazi, when he did our audit, is that correct? When he did our audit, he said we... those funds were available. And this just keeps coming on and on and on as a political horse. And it's gone. Get on another horse.
Mr. President, I'm simply looking for an explanation, a reason for the transfer. Now, I'm hearing, one, we're doing it to keep WPCA rates down, and then I'm being told it's to buy new equipment. So which one is it? If you buy new equipment, that doesn't necessarily keep down... if I can finish, please. If that doesn't necessarily keep down the WPCA rates. So I'm just a little bit confused as to why this transfer of bonded money that was voted on a referendum is being moved over to WPCA, when there was a lot of controversy about WPCA money being used and how it was to do that repair over on Pershing Drive, which I'm coming to find out, I'm not too comfortable with the way that whole thing was handled. So that's for a later day.
Mr. King?
I think I could help fill in some of the blanks here. As far as to whether it was to improve the factory or keep the rate down, the answer to that would be both. This is...
Just maybe.
$235,000 that was designated for building improvements is actually going towards building improvements. No surprise. They needed pump replacements down there. That is what the money is going to. That would reflect in the rate of WPCA, because the city didn't designate that money. If we're voting on to give to them to pay for that, that would have raised the rate for your average consumer, $20 a year if we didn't do that. So we're using that money as designated. They also took care of the repair, together with the city. We shared expenses on the Pershing Drive project. I don't think this is a negative. This is two sides of the city that are coming together. It was a little creative. I was there when we came up with it.
Three hours.
Make sure that things were covered. There were no losses. We did not have to cut manpower. We did not have to cut operations, run and expand with two brand-new pumps, exactly what the money was sent with. If we don't do that, it sits somewhere, we don't spend it, and everybody enjoys having a regular life. Taxes had to go up a little bit to balance the budget. We didn't think people... even if I've heard from people, it's only $16,000, it's only $20. You get a lot of years of only this and only that, and all of a sudden comes a lot. The money is designated and being spent as it should, and I think it was a good idea,